Uh, City Clerk, if you would please call a row for attendance, please ma'am.
Alderman Carter.
Uh.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Uh huh.
Alderman Little.
Here.
Alderman Walker.
Here.
Baby.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Alderman Vaughn.
Here.
All right, everyone is with us and that is wonderful. I will call this meeting to order. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We will have an invocation by Alderman Sistrunk, followed by a moment of silence.
I plead in the flag of the United States of America. To the Lord, in which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, infinite, just one.
Alderman Sistrunk, if you would please, ma'am.
Thank you. Tonight, we pray for those who influence public opinion, whether they are elected officials, or those in the media, or those who hold positions of respect within our community. Almighty God, you proclaim your truth in every age by many voices. Directly in our time, we pray, those who speak where many listen, and write what many read, that they may do their part in making the heart of this people alive, its mind sound, and its will righteous, to the honor of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
All right, everyone will be seated. We will move on to agenda items. First item is for approval of the official agenda, including consented items. All right, and I will go again, one by one, with each alderman to ensure that they are, have the opportunity to give me their feedback on the official agenda. Alderman Carter, do you have any changes you wish to make to the official agenda or the consented agenda?
No ma'am.
All right, Alderman Sistrunk.
I, I do. Um, I have some items I would like to add to the consent agenda. Um, item nine C.
Okay, item nine C is consideration of returning the city's startle department heads to full pay at the pay period beginning July seventeenth, twenty twenty. I'm gonna do, see if I can hear anyone say, say that they have any problem with that as the consent agenda item. Do I have anyone on the phone who would rather not have that on consent?
And I, I would like to amend that to include-
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Uh, and I'd like to amend that to include authorizing the mayor to, um, bring back city furloughed employees, full-time employment, in consultation with the city's department heads, if and if the decline in the city's sales tax numbers on July fifteenth, twenty twenty are no more than a hundred and thirty-five dollars, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, or twenty percent less than the same period last year, whichever is smaller. And I have that-
Woo, that's a mouthful. Okay, um, I'll tell you what, we will go one by one for that one because that's a little more complex.
And I, I'd like to just say that, um, we're gonna bring people back at the end of July, with most far anyway. Um, we find that some of our departments are starting to feel a little stressed by not having all the people there, that stress relief, so there being some human errors made. Um, and so, this is just an attempt to, um, case by case, department by department, um, look at those, if, if who needs to be back, you know, like a helper, and especially as we get ready to have, um, students moving back into town.
Okay, I'm gonna read that one more time, just to, just to make sure everyone heard. And her motion is to, um, or, or she wants to amend the item to put on consent as being move approval of returning the city's startle department heads to full pay at the pay period beginning July seventeenth, twenty twenty, and authorizing the mayor to bring back the city's furloughed employees to full-time employment in, uh, in consultation with the city's department heads, and if the decline in the city's sales tax numbers on July fifteenth, twenty twenty are no more than a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, or twenty percent less than the same period last year, whichever is smallest. Uh, anyone have an objection to that particular motion, or that particular, uh, agenda item being put on consent? All right, hearing none, we will add that item to consent with the changes as related to the, uh, reading that I just did. Any other items for consent?
Yes, if, if it was that.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, under engineering, item nine eleven, the one.
Okay, I'm gonna read it real quick, and that's authorization to enter into an agreement with an independent contractor, or ten ninety-nine, as an engineering inspector in the city, in the startle engineering utilities department. Any objection to that item being put on consent? All right, hearing none, that item will go on consent. You have another one?
Mayor, I have no objection to that, but I believe it'd be worthwhile to explain what, what that is.
Okay, all right, um, and Mr. Kemp is out of the room because we have a rather crowded room, but I can tell you, uh, in essence, what it is, is we lost our engineering inspector. We had just hired one, and, uh, due to family issues, he had to leave us, and he's moving away, and, and in an effort to get someone, um, in the interim before we, uh, because we did have a hiring freeze, in an effort to get someone in the interim to fill that role, which is, uh, partially paid by utilities and partially paid by the street department, or the engineering department, it is to inspect infrastructure that is going in, and we have a good bit of infrastructure that's currently being put in the ground that has been, um, or in the past, in the recent past, when we had an engineering inspector, they would, they would make sure that it was installed correctly. So that's to put someone in, in the interim until we can determine if we're going to hire another one, or do this on a contract basis. Is that what you had in mind, Alderman Walker?
Yes, ma'am, it is, and the only other, uh, follow-up to that is, what is the application process, and how will that decision be made, and at what point do we look to make that hire?
I, I think the answer to that is, um, as we look toward opening back up from our hiring, uh, freeze that the board instituted, that would be one of those positions that we would, uh, that we would look to bring back sooner than later.
No, no, ma'am, I mean, the way the, the current, uh, what we're approving tonight says we're going to enter to an agreement with an independent contractor. How and when, and who is going to be choosing that independent contractor, and when do we expect that to actually occur?
Okay, I apologize, I did my misunderstanding what you were saying. Um, and I don't have that answer at this point, because I assumed that Mr., uh, Mr. Kemp would be doing that in concert with, uh, Mr. Burnett, and with Mr. Other Kemp, with Kemp Senior as well as Kemp Junior, so the three of them would make that, uh, would, would make that selection. And Terry, you're in the room, we've got, would you, I see him nodding, so I think that's what, uh, they had in mind, Alderman Walker. Is that, did that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is, is that still at, uh, okay for consent from you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, that item is good consent. Anything else, Alderman Sistrunk?
Um, Departmental Business, eleven five one, the park.
Okay, the lowest and best bid for, uh, tree service to cut dead trees along the key property line, and then grinding the stumps in the areas of the key parks. Anyone have any issue with having that one on consent?
I just got one question.
Alderman Vaughn.
I didn't see you.
Yes, Mr. DePullo is the one making the recommendation.
Vaughn over here, Alderman Vaughn, which we've got some real issues with trees in that park, um, that are nearing the end of their useful life, some that are at the end of their useful life, so it's, it's, it's much needed, and I appreciate your question.
Okay, all right, hearing none, that one will go on consent. All right, uh, Alderman Little, do you, is that the end, Alderman Sistrunk? Okay, Alderman Little, do you have anything that you would like to put on consent, or adjust at all on the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am.
All right, Alderman Beatty? Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am, mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. And Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. With that, uh, I need a motion for approval of the agenda with the consented items as, uh, amended. I have a motion from Alderman Carter for the approval of the official agenda with the consented items. Do I have a second? I heard a second from Alderman Sistrunk first. Um, all right, if you would please, answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name, and we're gonna start down at, uh, Alderman Vaughn, seven. We're gonna go in reverse a little bit tonight, just to break it up.
Alderman Vaughn.
Uh huh.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Carter.
Yea.
All right, that is unanimous. Um, the agenda is approved with the consented items as, as adjusted, and I will now read out the approval of the, uh, uh, agenda items that were on consent. First is consideration of the minutes of the June second, twenty twenty, meeting of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the June twelfth, twenty twenty, work session of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the June sixteenth, twenty twenty, meeting of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the June eighteenth, twenty twenty, meeting of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Starkville. Under Mayor's Business, you have consideration of extending the proclamation of a local emergency due to the COVID nineteen virus for an additional thirty days. B, you have consideration of calling for the first public hearing on amending the city of Starkville Code of Ordinances, Article Three, Section eighty-two dash fifty-one, at sex, assemblies, parades, and processions. And C is consideration of returning the city of Starkville department heads to full pay at the pay period beginning July the seventeenth, with the additional language that I read earlier, and I now don't have it in front of me, so it was read a couple of times, it should be good. Um, then we have under Airport, request approval to purchase a John Deere HPX six one five E Gator from Wade, Inc., in the state contract amount of ten thousand five hundred and one dollars and thirty-five cents, from the FAA twenty twenty CARES Act grant for the Georgia and Bryan Field Airport. Under Planning, we have consideration appointment of Vicky West for the vacancy in Ward Two, the Starkville Planning and Zoning Commission, set fix star on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Under Engineering, we have request authorization to enter into an agreement with an independent contractor, or ten ninety-nine, as an engineering inspector in the Starkville Engineering Utilities Department. Under, uh, Finance and Administration, we have consideration of budget amendments. Under Parks, we have request authorization to accept the lowest and best bid in the amount of seven thousand one hundred dollars from Montgomery Tree Service for debris and dead tree removal along the key property line, and the cutting of eight dead decayed pine trees and stump grinding in various areas in the key parks. Under Police Department, we have request approval to purchase three covert video surveillance cameras through a one-hundred percent reimbursable JAG hotspot grant from Nemo Box Cover Trak Group, Inc., for the total of twenty-one thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars, the lower of two quotes. Again, under Police, we have request approval to accept additional funds from the Justice Assistant Grant, JAG, fiscal year eighteen, dash sixteen, HS twenty-three eleven, in the amount of six thousand six hundred and twenty dollars, to be used for patrol equipment, and is now one-hundred percent reimbursable fund. Three, request approval to declare two police vehicles, a two thousand and seven Ford Crown Victoria with a VIN ending at two four three two, and a two thousand and nine Ford Crown Victoria with a VIN ending seven three two six, at surplus, and authorization to list on govdeals.com. Now, under the Utilities, we have request authorization to upgrade the current Honeywell Conexo software for the AMI system, to Conexo NetSense eleven point X, in the amount of sixteen thousand four hundred and four dollars, making yearly cost total forty-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars. Request authorization to accept the lowest and best bid for the Green Oaks Sewer Rehabilitation from Suncoast Infrastructure for Phase One, in the amount of six hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and Phase Two, in the amount of four hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars. Uh, three is request authorization for Starkville Utilities to participate in TBA Home Uplift Program, and contributed funds allotted by TBA that allows eligible residential customers to improve their home's energy efficiency. Four is request approval to accept the lowest and best bids received for July one, twenty twenty, through December thirty-one, twenty twenty, source of supply listing for Starkville Utilities, Electric Division and Water Division. And last but not least, approval of net funds other than CDVG funds to a project under the Mississippi Community Development Block Grant, CDVG program for proposed public facility sewer improvement. And that concludes the consent agenda. My pleasure. Uh, next we have, uh, what is normally, um, Mayor's comments. We have comments by both the mayor and the board, and in this case, I get to tell Chief Yarborough, who I don't see in here, but he doesn't have to come in. Um, but yesterday, in case no one caught the press conference, I am proud, proud, proud to say that our fire department is now ranked a fire rating of three, and that is an awesome occasion. Uh, and I have to give certainly credit to the fire department, and, um, all of the guys who worked so hard to do that, which also includes the water department, because water is a major component of that, but most particularly, uh, it is training, it is our equipment, it is our water service, it is lots of, lots of details that I have inadequate knowledge of, but enough to know that it's a big deal, because we're only one out of five in the state, and that is an incredible thing for us to be. So I'm very proud of our guys, and I, I know that, uh, I know the board is as well, and, uh, Alderman Beatty, I want to give him credit, because that was one of the major things that he was very, uh, interested in and concerned with us reaching, when he got on the Board of Aldermen. So, um, congratulations to all of them, and y'all should be very proud. It will also make your insurance rates go down, which means for businesses, and I think for residential, it'll make a difference in, um, in our insurance rates, which is a, which is a big deal, so. Anyway, kudos, kudos to those guys, and I am really pleased to be able to say that, so. I don't have anything else, um, at this point, anyone else. Alderman Carter, anything you wish to say? Alderman Sistrunk. Alderman Little?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Beatty? Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am, mayor, thank you.
And Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item we have on our agenda, for those of you who are not, not our usual attendees, is, uh, citizens' comments, and one of the things I wanted to say about this particular evening, because I'm guessing there are a whole lot of people in here who wish to speak to us, uh, with their thoughts about masks, and now would be the time. You have three minutes. Um, we are timing it, we do time it, and this is not a time at which we normally do, go back and forth, but it offers you three minutes to say whatever you would like about masks. And I say that because when we get to the, is, agenda item that is later on in the agenda, not too late, but a little bit later on in the agenda, that is not an opportunity for public dialogue, so here is your opportunity to say whatever it is you would like to say. Um, so, now, if you would, um, anyone who wishes to speak can come forward, and Mr. Turner, who is our regular, is first up.
Oh, I figured everyone, um, uh, I have a lot of friends that have underlying health problems with their lungs and stuff, and, and they, uh, uh, were thinking that if it any kind of cure, that they can mention that, uh, that it won't get so hot until they start coughing, and, uh, they have to get their, uh, inhalers, uh, uh, these, they, they don't mind, but, uh, the folks in the field, it, 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 it makes, makes, makes it hot for them, uh, along with their other dying, and just-
All right, thank you, Mr. Turner. Come on up. And if you would just identify yourself, not only because of the mask, we're not sure who you are, but also just for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is, uh, Cameron Huxford. Probably, maybe, fortunately or unfortunately, several of you are aware of me, but anyway, uh, I just want to be clear that we're not, we, I, I did send y'all a, a letter, I think that, uh, Ben passed them out, so it's maybe, if your convenience, tonight before the vote, you can, uh, you can read it, but just for the sake of brevity, I also want to make mention that we are here independently, the eight, the other seventeen people who signed our letter, we're all here independent of the hospital. Our views are our own, and do not represent necessarily in any way what the hospital says. Um, but we have all gathered here, eighteen providers, uh, some in signatures, some back there, uh, because we do have the help in one being of every single person in Starkville, I can, I count it on our minds. Um, we, uh, acknowledge that this is a novel virus, and I have an issue, it's brand new, and there's no definitive expert in the entire country on this virus. Uh, we believe that the eighteen of us, we have personal experience with this, and our opinions are important as it relates to the citizens of Starkville, and I think the most contentious thing that's been taken out of context, I want to make clear that we are not against wearing masks. We have never said do not, should not, wear a mask. We have just said that we are against the mandatory requirement that everyone should wear one. The science behind that is unsettled. It does add additional strain on many of our patients, it increases anxiety, and for one who makes care of long patients every day, it does increase, uh, problems with shortness of breath on those who have to wear it. All right, it is not our position to argue the merit of wearing masks, it's right here to tell you that data is at best inconsistent. It is well established that hand-to-face contact increases one's risk of infection, and proper mask wear includes adjusting it, wearing it below your nose, pulling it around your neck, wearing it on your head, your forehead, in any number of ways, and mandating that will only exacerbate the many ways that you can mess it up. And we do believe that it also may provide a false sense of security, and lead to decreased conviction to perform the more protective activities outlined on the CDC, such as social distancing and hand hygiene. We believe the virus is here to stay for the foreseeable future. We must learn to live with it. As data evolves on who and what and why are people who are infected, we will change with it, our opinions if necessary, because we have both a professional Hippocratic and a moral obligation to do so. We urge you to make decisions that will protect the vulnerable, but also allow the less vulnerable to live as normal or lax as possible. We believe that herd immunity is real and valuable to the population at large. We believe that the healthy are able to take the brunt of what is mostly an asymptomatic disease burden for the greater good of the population, and in fact, the healthy will have to, if we do not believe we will have herd immunity or vaccines for months to years. We do not envy your position, mayor, but we do ask you to consider three hundred and nine years of combined medical experience on those signatures when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hudson. Anyone else?
My name is Emily Landrum, and I'm a board certified family doctor here in Starkville, self and privately employed. I'm speaking to you today in strong support of universal masking for Starkville. You also received a letter from me in your e-packet in support of this, along with some sources of helpful information. I know for many, this has unfortunately become a political issue, but I assure you it is not. We are almost six months into a pandemic caused by a novel or new virus. There are many things about COVID nineteen that we still don't know, and it will take time to learn, but there are many things that we have learned. We know that measures of masking, social distancing, and hand washing are highly important to preventing unnecessary and burdensome spread of COVID nineteen. We may not have the randomized control trials that we would like to have, but we have well-trained and trustworthy public health officials in both the medical and scientific communities at large, who are able to give us proper and safe guidelines to follow. I personally spoke with Dr. Dahl, our state health officer, earlier today, who has continued to offer consistent warnings that if we don't take action now, we will be overwhelmed of the state, and possibly of the community. Just this afternoon, Dr. Dahl, the Mississippi State Department of Health, banned elective surgeries and admissions until July twentieth in the Solomon County, Pines, Ranjin, Madison, Horace, Young, and Washington. Masks not only have the potential to prevent the spread of COVID nineteen up to ninety percent of the time, but they also serve as social cues, reminding others to keep their distance and be mindful of their actions. If we of the community want to continue the path to normalcy, we must embrace the practice of masking, distancing, and hand washing fully and wholly. Thank you for your time, I'm happy to take any questions later.
Well, Dr. Landrum, before you go, uh, I was told, I thought I saw that your letter was in the e-packet, but Mr. Latimer is saying it wasn't, I know I put it in the, in the- Okay, well, I apologize for that. Do you have your letter with you?
I do have a-
If you would give it to the city clerk and let her, because it was supposed to be a part of the e-packet, it's, so if you would please, thank you so much, sorry to, sorry to, uh, be, have confusion on that.
Dr. Landrum, before you go, what's, what's percentage of, of non-occasions in the United States as a percentage of COVID, well, uh, do you know, is it twenty, twenty-five percent?
I don't know those numbers specifically, no.
Any chance of twenty percent on those?
Well, we have this as a point of discussion, we may have some other wisdom out there later, if you want to wait. Thank you, Dr. Landrum, appreciate you. All right, anyone else liking to speak to this issue, that would like to speak to this issue, or any other issue, this is citizens' comments, so.
I'm Walter Quison. Uh, I'm not an expert, but, uh, I am trained, uh, trained in logic and critical thinking, and I have studied this issue for about four months. At first, I, I didn't take it seriously, and, uh, I care to read some of these graphs, because I've been watching them, and these are both, uh, on a later sale, in a law, law sale, and to answer your question about the percentage of cases in the, in the, that, as the, the world, the U.S., these so far, all about fail, that it is well over fifty percent of total world case. That is the half. Uh, I figure on this, we should not have, without other measures taken, to see that we get this thing under control, we definitely need to remind those, uh, they regret, uh, regret opening the economy back up. The first two cases, first two graphs show Florida, the problems that Florida and California have. That contrasted to what happened in New Jersey and New York, where they have declining daily cases. Okay, this is dramatic, and it's a lot, lot of plot, and on a lot of lot of plot, every, uh, drop is a factor in, let me say it. So these are very dramatic drops for New York and New Jersey. And if you look at Louisiana, they experienced a, almost ten-fold drop, and they loosened up, and now it's very similar to Florida and California. Okay? And finally, uh, the, the next, uh, step plot- And finally, the next step plot is three states around us that have similar trajectories. Mississippi and Alabama are very similar.
Mr. O'Quinnson, that's three minutes. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And we have what you gave.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hey, anyone else? Next, ma'am.
Hello.
Fine.
I'm nervous.
Well, let's start with your name.
Mrs. Yandy.
Mrs. Yandy, okay, thank you.
I'm nervous. I stopped this last minute. But I'm someone who cannot wear a mask, um, medically.
Okay.
And I've had to drive around Starkville to do my shopping in other towns. And there is no evidence that masks, cloth masks especially, stop the spread of COVID. In fact, it may increase the incidence of COVID-related incidents. According to OSHA, when people use cloth masks, they tend to fit it with them, which makes, when you put your hands up there, and then you put it in a mask, mask sticks up whatever you touch. And I've seen people that are touching and pulling down their mask, and that is not healthy. And when you wear a mask, bring that into your own face. And that is why I cannot wear a mask, because I can't, my oxygen levels will drop. And I myself, when I had a veteran, I was pulling it down constantly to get a box. Some people say that, that's not true. But from my experience, it's actually studied on, it appeared in journals, sorry. That is not the case. They, in years past, before COVID, that there were signs, there were census signs on exactly how long can medical professionals wear a mask? And they, it turned out that those professionals could not even wear them for extended periods of time. And so they were asking to be believed of having to wear masks. And in terms of fatalities, I believe there's been only three fatalities in the last two days, and they're not in the county. What's happening is the rate of COVID has been confined to nursing homes. And I don't know what roads we have in checking on the nursing homes, but that is where the prevalence of COVID is happening. It's not happening among younger people, sixty-five years or less. It's sixty-five plus. Even the handbook from my work place said that it doesn't cover. And what, in my opinion, we are doing here is killing ourselves now, fully by inhaling our own waste. And that will lay it off.
That's three minutes. Thank you so much. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you very much.
And I also speak to that, and City Attorney, we've talked about that, about City of Kidlo, that puts the fires everywhere in their town. Is that correct? That you can't require anyone to wear a mask, that's fourth amendment of the Constitution?
At least for reasons, I think.
Yeah, so if there's a legitimate medical reason that somebody can't wear a mask, well, then certainly, it's all about protecting health. And so that was, is really to try not to get COVID. And if it's a critical situation or a serious situation, where you have a medical provider saying this person doesn't have to wear a mask, it'd be certainly out of control.
Man, we're going to speak to that tonight. If you want to stay around for the conversation, I'm going to get to that board item, but that's one thing I would bring to that conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Did you want to come up? Come up.
I'm Greg Wells, resident of Starkville. I didn't intend to speak, but I, my letter I compiled here so vividly clears up, nullifies, I think, some of the comments of the last speakers. And I just thought, I want to read it. The United States has the highest incidence of COVID in the world, with three million cases and four and a half percent fatality rate, one hundred and thirty thousand deaths. This weekend, the media has repeatedly echoed the precedent ridiculous July 3rd comment that Mount Rushmore, quote, "COVID cases, ninety-nine percent of which are totally harmless." Not once did the media correct this blatant error that clearly implies that only one percent of cases are critical, when in fact, we all concede forty-five percent or forty-five, four and a half percent are fatal. How irresponsible that our media doesn't, and thus repeats this quote, which the unenlightened might begin to believe, but never explicitly do they point out the enormous breach of simple logic. Let us take a close look, close look at Hong Kong, which is one of the high-density cities in the world. Seventeen and a half million, uh, thousand people, seventeen and a half thousand people per square mile. A city of seven and a half million with another five million in its surrounding former colonial territory. So prior to Hong Kong, it's had very little shutdown of commerce and business. Retail and restaurants were able to remain open because citizens complied with wearing masks as promulgated in January. As a result of face masks, Hong Kong has had only twelve hundred cases of COVID-19 with seven deaths in the past six months. And PBS, I happened to catch yesterday, cited that the number of deaths was only four. I don't know which is right. I didn't check that fact. These remarkable statistics were cited last week in the familiar Janet newspaper, USA Today, Monday, July 29th, page 7A. Notice that's a remote internal page, a point I want to make. Under the headline, "No Wearing Mask, Not Wearing Mask Is Suicidal", which title should have been extended with "And Omocidal", because these are full-quality masks and trap larger particles emitted by contagious individuals who might otherwise critically infect others. And that is why we should all put on our masks to protect the innocent around us from the risk that we may be contagious and not even know. Hong Kong's success should be repeated, known repeatedly by the media over and over at every opportunity, as we are, they do so with so many ordinary news items every day. Hong Kong should be emphasized on top pages and bold headlines.
Mr. Will, that's three minutes. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. All right, anyone else? Anyone else? Are there some outside? Okay. In an effort to keep our social distancing recycling, folks, in and out. Is that it? Yes, no one else outside? Okay, anyone else inside before I close citizens' comments? All right, seeing none, we will close citizens' comments. Thank you all for your input. We appreciate you being here. And the next item we have is public appearances, and we have Mr. Bruce Brown. Mr. Brown, you have ten minutes, and Ms. Hardin will be timing. If you have anything you wish to, anything for the board or anything.
Yes, ma'am. Hey, board, I think I lonely Charles Bruce Brown's in my office on Main Street. Of course, I'm up here about the streetery that you're trying to put in place in front of my office, picking up nine parking places, being used for specific restaurants. In fact, we got official request, restaurant tile. The last board committee communicated that officials were just in the restaurant tile, and we also have been at the nine-two-nine and others. But the fact is, that restaurant tile is owned by City and Holy. Of course, one basic limitation for the government is you cannot reuse public property dependent on a private business, private individual, or a private industry. The government, quote, a couple of AG's opinions, is well-suffered by Mississippi. The municipality is not authorized to use other kinds of equipment or labor for purposes of making improvements to house projects. Public officials may not use this public office or public property for private gain. Governor recently told us to expect that we can be called in. Appears Mississippi has problems with population giving taxidermy funded services away as political gifts. Get the pass a lot of stuff. No free service should be furnished by any government system to meet private person or our comparison association. Best rate for board sending, if y'all caring about one business and not the rest of the downtown. At this point, the next step is to help the police deliver food to the restaurant. You know, you can't do that. Good, just a quick run up to now Main Street, tissue, try to get Henry fast food soon. Stop selling other businesses or objectives. Now, clearly, the City Attorney, that's what's called authority, that you get. City can change public use to another public use, not from a public use to a.
Sorry, are these the same documents? They're all one?
Correct.
They stick together?
They're all together.
They're all together. Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
Different temperatures on everything.
Got you. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Defend this via ex myself the Constitution, statutes, numerous AG's opinions, cases. Article seven, one eighty-three, the city can't do the business of restaurant business, including. Article four, section sixty-six, no grand donation or donation favoring any person project should be enacted except by the congressional two-thirds of members elected of each branch of the legislature. No bans about by sectorary purpose or use. So this mask makes a part of this talk. This applies to political subdivisions. Claiming between one thousand seven hundred and five, municipal powers act, headed at us, granting new donation. Y'all are donating part of city property, big use, if part of a restaurant, extend their donation out of our street. Another nineteen, three forty, usually public funds, equipment, supplies, materials for private purposes, headed. And we've got a, our camp, ninety-eight, why I don't think you should. And of course, that would turn these sidewalks by tables by the stores, by clothing racks, tender bargain, go ahead, those are clearly not lawful. I never brought that up. All these restaurants are trying to survive. Now they need to pick up delivery, well, in the same way that I said. Means you shouldn't. Those parking places are premium downstairs. Mayor, even your own building, should find those parking places being used. Let's take the liberty of taking some more photographs. July seventh, today. June twenty-sixth. June twenty-fifth. June twenty-fourth. All of those parking places still being used along with the city industry, being used for delivery and transport. And we all know there's a limited downtown park. Especially between City Hall and Lan, uh, Lanston Street, she's lovely, actually. Two hour parking in the station was imposed because of. Especially the South Chancery, City Court's in fashion. Sometimes more of them are from town in fashion. You're not only hurting the rest of us, you're hurting restaurants you're trying to help. Because if that ain't parked, if that restaurant to eat, they're going to go somewhere else. Call I know him, I've called my wife and asked her to meet me for lunch, mom. And she would go downtown, make two backs around the block, she'd call me, go, I think I parked today. She would take you up on the floor, and we can go to the door somewhere else. Of course, I see, I see that today. I don't know if y'all noticed, but the trucks going up to the delivery place in the middle of the street on Main Street, carry beer, cups, food, and all that. They have customers in that area that she's trying to lock off. Of course, this is clearly unfair to all the other restaurants in there. Y'all are favored with this one or three restaurant, not better than everyone else. No one can practically believe it. If somebody's going to go to Hardee's, pick up a living gun, drive downtown, out to find a parking place, and they go to eat at these places that y'all see. Of course, the lot, I mean, you put people at risk, it's hot, folks seem to mix with. Who is going to come out there and sanitize those places? It's going to blow up. Where's the leftover food? Empty cartons going down. We already know downtown wind blows, it's like a wind tunnel. It will blow the army off your belly for some. All that stuff's going to blow down the street. You're going to have food, I don't know how you're going to keep kids from throwing food, rolling chairs, causing problems with the constitution when it comes down. So what happens, a government agency can only deal a benefit to one person by taking it from others. My assistant tells me something there. About to use the parking behind Starkville Cafe, City of Orion. Put your tables back there on side of Jackson. What was shaded, that's likely to get hit by cars coming through there. Or even really help us, about to do some more parking. Down on Jackson and Lanston, where the old farmer's market was. Spend the parking lot, people put eight big tables in, throw up, they want to do work. Go down there between Jefferson and Main Street, behind the St. Bellin. Just some more downtown parking. Go down there, one eighty-two, which was one eighty-three, Jefferson, the Echon, and over on Lafayette Street. Most of that's empty, other than high sales parking place. It would be great to give us some more parking down there instead of lit. Already know, City Hall, roundabout, so the other things that's been done is taken. Publicity, to ask you how to reconsider this. One, because it's in property, use public property for private business, private enterprise. Two, it's not a very good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right, next we go to public hearings. We have the first public hearing on adopting a temporary leader in entertainment district ordinance for the city of Starkville. We called for the first public hearing in our last meeting, and this is an opportunity for anyone wishing to speak about this matter or to discuss this matter, to do so under a public hearing standard. Anything the board wishes to say before I open it for a public hearing? All right, hearing none, I will open it for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this item, now would be the opportunity. Anyone? For or against? Okay, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Our next public hearing for this item will be at the next board meeting, at which point in time there will be an opportunity for us to adopt, so, just FYI. The next we have a public. All right, Walter.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. I would just say, on this item, if we can, in the next packet, we can, we need to make sure that the graphic that shows the boundaries, it refers to it in this packet. But we need to make sure that that graphic is included in the next packet.
Okay, we will, and that was, that was my error. I didn't get it to Ms. Hardin in time. I think she has now added it to the e-packet, so it should be in there now. We'll make sure it's included in the next one when we go out for, on the twenty-first.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry to. Uh, next we have a public hearing, and Mr. Havilin is going to make his presentation for this special exception for a thirty-two unit townhouse development. So, Mr. Havilin? Is the applicant here? Okay. No, no, you don't have to come up yet. I just was making sure y'all were here. Thank you.
SE twenty-nine zero six, you all hear me okay?
Yes. Yes. Can you stand up if you want to, or use all of, um, like?
S E dash one twenty-nine zero six, this is a request by Willis Owens, a furniture engineering on behalf of Charlie Morgan, to allow for a townhome development in a C zoning district on the northeast corner of Guest Drive in Mallory Lane. The use chart requires a special exception for a townhouse, row house development and a C zoning district. The proposed development consists of thirty-two unit townhomes on two lots, each lot is approximately four ninety acres. The maximum density of the townhome units is twenty units per acre. The proposed development has a density of sixteen point three three units per acre. All proposed townhomes consist of two bedroom units. And this is a graphic that was provided by the applicant, and it's not, it's not that you're approving the the plan that's laid out here, you're approving the use on to the product of townhomes. The request was noticed in accordance with the Unified Development Code, forty-one property owners of record with under sixty feet of subject property are no contract about mail. A legal ad was published in the Suffolk Daily News on May third, twenty twenty, and sign was posted on property that could speak to its location. We have received no response from those notifications. There are eight criteria for special exception approval. They are shown up here on the slide and also in the package. In the opinion of the planning department, providing use associated with special exceptions does meet the requirements for the special exception review and approval. Um, there are several, uh, similar type developments in the immediate vicinity of new lots, and therefore the plan is that as no objection to its use. Section thirteen point three point four of the U D C also requires a special exception to meet the additional standards for that use, which are listed up there, there are seven of them. Uh, the planning zoning commission, upon the request of the applicant, recommended the removal of one of the additional standards as a condition. The additional standard thirteen point five point five point D point two, requiring street facing entrances to be removed as a requirement under the additional standard. And then in addition to this, at the bottom of, if the applicant is wanting to pursue the plan that was actually shown previously, and for that plan to be approved, there are actually other public hearings that are scheduled as we go forward. On July twenty-second, the Board of Justice Appeals will hear seven variances for parking, access management policy, and stormwater manual. And on August eighteenth, the planning zoning commission will also hear three more special exceptions relating to the parking on the site. And if those those are recommended for approval or denied, they will come back before the Board of Alderman on September first, twenty twenty, if there are any questions.
Okay, um, does the applicant have anything you'd like to add to any of this? Okay, all right, I see, I see a head shaking back there, so, all right, hang on. All right, any board members with any questions at this point in time before I open it as a public hearing? Alden Carver?
Um, I take, take great comfort, um, maybe the government from what, I'm in what body work, depending on the side, I'm a three, so yeah, I will be in agreement with it.
Alden Sistrone? All right, Alden Little?
No ma'am, thank you.
Alden Walker?
No ma'am, nothing at this time, but I would like to have discussion once the public hearing is over.
Okay, Alden Beatty?
Mayor, as I'm standing, are we approving exceptions for the zone before these other issues are are gonna be addressed as far as stormwater, things like that, or?
All right, uh, this is just for the use, so they can proceed comfortably with developing a site plan. They've already kind of done that on the same sort of trajectory as this approval, and during that approval process is when the other stuff came up.
Let me ask you this, though, what what we get into, we get, you know, I told you something like stormwater down road, and we've already approved, they're going ahead spending money to develop this this site, or develop plans for sites, stuff like that, what what kind of, what's that for the city? If if there's something that where we were?
This is just the use, there is infinite number of ways you can put the use on that site, not necessarily in the way that was presented on that plane. There's other ways oriented building, the parking, the stormwater to accommodate everything, increase the number of units, decrease the number of units, it's just the use of the site, not that plane. The other requests that are coming forward are based on that plane.
Anything else, Alden Beatty? Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Perkins?
No ma'am, mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Alden Vaughn, all right, thank you. All right, I will take this time to open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor or against this particular item on the agenda now would be the opportunity. Anyone either in favor or against? Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing, and now discussion. Alden Carver, anything for, well, do I have a motion at all? I have a motion for approval from Alden Carver, do you have a second? Second from Alden Vaughn, all right, now discussion. Alden Carver, anything you else you wish to say?
No ma'am.
All right, Alden Sistrone? Alden Little?
No ma'am.
All right, and Alden Walker, you wish to to discuss some of this?
Yes ma'am, uh, Mr. Havlin, if you wouldn't mind, could you please pull up the the aerial of the site? Get the plans fine, that e- either one, I think the, I believe, I certainly believe that, uh, a special exception to allow townhomes are appropriate for this site, given the site characteristics and compatibility of uses. Uh, where where I do, uh, differ, I I'm certainly not in favor, if you look at the, uh, the additional standard that's been removed, number two, thirteen point five point five point D point two, does two things. It requires that if you have a corner lot, which this is, this abuts two public streets, um, that run on either side, and in that same language, it talks about the buildings having to a- address the street. While we're not necessarily approving this plan, what has been set up for variances to be approved, the subsequent seven, and then another additional three, um, is predicated on us approving this tonight. Uh, I would hope that we would consider reintroducing that number two that had been removed, thirteen point five point five point D point two, because in all frankness, what this plan is, is to making sure that you can maximize the density on the site and sort of meet our codes, but when you have them to ask for ten different variances, it sounds like you're trying to really force something that's not, that's not naturally fitting. And if you look at the the actual aerial of what's a- around this, having these buildings address that corner lot is such a critical piece of this. Um, and right now, the backs of those two buildings, uh, that don't face the, they look over at attention, which might be quite nice looking, but the back of that is to the street, and then on all the other buildings, you have the side of the building to the street. I don't think anybody would argue, or I would say design professionals shouldn't argue, that this does anything more than making sure that you can maximize the number of units on the plate, on the site. It doesn't create a very, uh, quality place that people are going to be. This is strictly designed for students to come, drive your car, get out of your car, go into your apartment building, or your townhome rather, and then don't get out until it's time to leave. It's just not a very, uh, place that is looking to create any sort of sense of identity on a corner lot, which is really important. There's a lot of development on that side of town, and as you can, as you know, some of it's pretty well done, and some of it's not, not so much, and you have a real opportunity here to make sure that we address this corner in a meaningful way. I would say the other piece that I'm I'm suspect that is one of the variances that they're looking, uh, to to get granted, is if you look on this plan, they're looking at ninety-degree parking that's backing directly out into the city street. That's that's, I'm certainly not in favor of that. I wouldn't, I don't think we should be in favor of approving that variance. Um, we know that that's not safe, you can look right across the street and you see that they have something that looks similar, but the difference is, is what you see across the street are driveways that have access to a garage. So you're backing into a garage, and so in that case, it certainly functions a little bit more like a driveway. In this case, we have ninety-degree parking, and you can say, well, we have that in other places around town, we do, but we haven't done that in a really long time because it's not very safe. If you're backing out ninety degrees into a city street, as this develops over time, that's not very ideal. I would certainly be in favor of approving parallel parking on on the sides of the street as much as we could, uh, as the applicant could get in that case, but I'm not, I would not be for a variance that is requesting the ninety-degree parking backing out into the city street. So all that being said, I think I'm and certainly, uh, would support the use of the special exception of the townhouse, but unless we add back, uh, number thirteen point five point five point D point two to address the corner lot and how the buildings are are addressed, I I will not be supporting, uh, this proposal.
All right, thank you, Alden Walker. Alden Beatty?
Senator, will this be said to all technical review?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Perkins?
No ma'am, mayor, thank you.
And Alden Vaughn?
Welcome ma'am.
All right, thank you, all right, I have a motion and I have a second. If you would please, if there's no, Alden Sistrone, I see your hand.
Yes, I have a quick question for, um, Cavlin and Alden Walker. It's the night of the night to add back to the items that you talked about, Alden Walker, or would that be done separately at another time?
I believe it would be done tonight. If this approved, it would need to have that, uh, that language added, thirteen point five point five D two would be need to be added tonight. Otherwise, was the motion as as approved, or as mentioned and seconded, does not include that condition? Is that correct, uh, city planner Havlin?
The variances of the special exception that they are now set to go do not include addressing that, because it was recommended as a condition.
Would you like to ask Ms. Alden Carver if he would like to amend his motion friendly amendment?
Yeah, I'd just like to be in my own place.
Okay, Mr. Latimer, you're up. And it's, it is, what's the, have you got the numbers in front of you, Mr. Latimer?
Mr. Havlin, correct me if I'm wrong, we're just striking the condition, is all we're doing, so the additional standards would apply as a matter of law under the U D C. For the proposed motion work, you would just say move approval of S E twenty dash oh six, a request for special exception to allow for a thirty-two unit townhouse development on Guest Drive in a C zoning district, period.
Is that satisfactory to Alden Carver?
I have to ask him if that's specifically on.
Mr. Morgan? Okay, we have a motion that puts back in, um, the travel, and you want to hand that to Ms. Morgan?
To, uh, remove the condition that was recommended for approval by planning zoning commission to. To remove the additional standard, or add the additional standard back, thirteen five point five point B point two, requiring street facing entrances to be removed, uh, as a part of an additional standard. So basically the units that are on the side of Mallory would have to face that, and then the units along Guest Drive would have to have some sort of door entrance along Guest Drive to sort of address the street.
We we have an example built across the road that shows on the satellite view that, that's what we got in design.
I understand, but you understand what what we're what we're asking to do.
Basically asking, I guess, to turn on west, west lot, I guess, to face.
Parallel to the street and supposed perpendicular to the street.
That's right.
Correct.
Is that going to require a redesign?
I mean, it's not gonna really require any redesign, I guess the main thing is just how they're gonna ac- they're just gonna access from the rear of the house, I guess. Once they park, they're gonna park at the rear of their house, more or less of the townhome.
Well, this is not the necessarily the design, this is not a special exception right now, but if we add that back in, then he would have to work within those confines, okay?
Any unit that is on the street would address the street, so.
Oh, so that means?
Just in theory, like the unit back here, if you could see the cursor in the upper right, the unit up there would not have to necessarily face the street, but the one that's in the road next to the street would have to address the street.
But you guys, and five of those units would have to face the.
Probably many would sit there facing the road, yes, which would be fine, so. Yeah, Alden Carver, is that?
I'm making sure all sun's facing, y'all understand, and.
No, I mean, I understand, it's just more or less what Cavlin, Mr. Morgan, I don't feel that, because I mean, doing that, basically you are gonna have to do a whole, a more or less redesigned, but.
Under buildings.
That's correct.
Yeah, and you probably lose a building.
No, I.
Down, I, downside.
The issue, the issue.
I think you. Hang on a second, Alden Walker.
I'm sorry, the issue we're having with rotating the buildings was that, one of the buildings basically blocked a half a building, so the person that moving into that building that was blocked by a a side of one building would have to walk in between buildings to move their stuff in and out of the building, versus being able to park in front of their house and being able to move their stuff in and out a lot easier, because more or less, these are gonna be older people moving into these townhomes, more.
Older people are moving into townhomes? Okay, that's fair, right? Okay, I'm sorry, I cut Alden Walker off. Alden Walker, I apologize, go ahead.
No, no ma'am, I think, uh, there certainly wouldn't have to be a wholesale re- redesign, but I think addressing the corner lot and that condition, uh, would mean that this plan in its current rendition would not be allowed by the the special exception and the additional language that's in the code. I think we have, uh, a a brand new U D C in place, and while they're on every plan, there's always gonna be an opportunity for every site to be adjusted a little bit and the need for a variance, and that's pretty typical. Uh, but having so many on the site, uh, that they're gonna be asking for, I think is problematic. I believe part of that could be addressed if we make sure that, uh, we hold the developer and the designers to to meeting those additional standard codes would go a long way in making, uh, th- this quality development for the people that are moving in, and to make sure that, uh, how it affects the street and that corner lot, uh, does us really good for for years to come. So I I'm in favor of that, um, if if we wanna add that language back in, or to make sure that all the, that all the additional standards are are required, um, and if if they're not, I I'll just vote no, and and that's okay. Um, I've I've learned along with, I've heard the vice mayor say enough, we don't, you know, you don't have to have everybody agree, um, but I I think that for me to vote yes on this, uh, that standard thirteen point five point five D two is is really important, uh, to making sure that this is a project that's going to, uh, go a long way towards meeting the needs of, uh, the city in the future. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alden Walker. All right, Alden Carver, it's your motion, do you wish it to stand, or do you want to add the language tracking out?
I'd go with the amendment.
You'll go with the amendment, all right, and it was, the second came from Alden Vaughn, Alden Vaughn, you good with that amendment? Sir? Okay, all right, thank you. That being said, no further discussion, uh, Alden Beatty?
In this design, I mean, this this project is buildings and concrete or asphalt pretty much the whole thing, I mean, if, and I, I guess we'll go back to this thing, if we get down the road and we start, y'all start moving, spending money on it and that kind of thing, and we, at some point in time, determine make a hundred-year, one hundred-year stormwater mitigation, you probably have one of these buildings got to come out in order to put a retention bond or something like that, may not, but if it does, but y'all prepared to do that? I mean, I don't see, I don't want us to be anything with, we did last year well, developer could have done that, didn't do it, you know, so, I mean, that's, I guess that's the question I have, i- is that easy?
And I guess to say, to speak back to your point, uh, we've already turned in the site plan and all of the additional information required with the stormwater, and then did meet the.
What, what are the?
Both, both points is, but I'm not having gone through full review yet, we're hoping on a special exception.
Any further, Alden Beatty? All right, thank you, all right. Hearing no further discussion, if you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name, and we can start with Alden Vaughn again.
Alden Vaughn.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alden Beatty?
Yea.
Alden Walker?
Yea.
Is that a yea, Alden Walker?
Yes, that was a yea, we have the language added back in for all the standards, correct?
That's correct. Thank you, all right.
Alden Little?
Yea.
Alden Sistrone?
Yea.
Alden Carver?
Yea.
All right, it's unanimous, thank you so much. Thank you, you too. All right, next item is a public hearing consideration of S E twenty dash oh seven, a special exception for a manufactured home on Sand Road, Mr. Havlin?
Yes, before I start this, this is gonna be, this is the first of a couple of, uh, bunch of requests that are coming, and they're all gonna be really similar, it's just a slightly different area each time. Uh, this is S E twenty dash zero seven, this is a request by Angela Williams on behalf of Starkville Octavice Consolidated School District, for a special exception to allow for a manufactured home on the west side of Sand Road, it was labeled area D, approximately three hundred thirty feet south of Louisville Street. The use chart requires a special exception for dwelling manufactured or modular homes in an R in zoning district. As you can see, this is, uh, right on the, uh, the parcel is on the southwest corner of Sand Road in Louisville, and then the home side is actually down just a little bit from that. The home side area is shown one hundred ninety-eight feet wide of the road, with a total square foot. footage of forty thousand three hundred twenty-six. Required minimum lot area for the use is forty thousand square feet. The required setbacks are as follows, thirty feet front, rear twenty-five, side ten. There are currently noted dwellings on the home site. The request was noticed in accordance with the UDC, eight property owners are registered with one hundred sixty feet of the subject property notified directly by mail, a legal ad was published in Starville Daily News on May twentieth, twenty twenty, a sign was posted on the property in this particular location. As of this date, the planning officer received no response from the notification. Section three point four point one lists the eight criteria for special exception approval. Sections thirteen point three point four of the UDC also requires a special exception needs additional standards for that use. Section thirteen point five point eight point D lists eleven additional standards for the proposed use. In the opinion of the planning department, proposed use associated with special exception request does need the criteria for special exception approval.
Thank you, Mr. Havelin. Any questions to Mr. Havelin before I open it to the public hearing? Alderman Carter? Alderman Sisdrum? Alderman Little?
No ma'am.
Alderman Walker?
No ma'am.
Alderman Beatty?
I'm ready, sir.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
No ma'am.
Alderman Vaughn? Alright, thank you. I'm gonna open it to the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, is the applicant here, is Ms., is Ms. Williams here? Ms. Williams, okay, do you have anything you want to add to this? Alright, thank you ma'am, appreciate it. And that was a no for the, for the record there. Um, so, anyone wishing to speak to this item? Anyone either for or against? Alright, seeing no one, I will close it to the public hearing. Um, we are in need of a motion. I have a motion for Alderman Vaughn for approval, I heard a second Alderman Carter. Second from Alderman Carter. Any further discussion? Alright, hearing none, if you would, answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Vaughn. Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Sisdrum.
Yea.
Alderman Carter.
Yea.
Alright, it is unanimous, motion carries, thank you so much. Thank you ma'am. Alright, and last but not least, in the public hearing, we have public hearing consideration of a special exception to a manufactured home. Mr. Havelin, you wanna repeat, rinse and repeat?
Uh, SE twenty dash zero, this is a request by Tahisha Taylor on behalf of Starville Octavia County School District, Consolidated School District, for a special exception to allow for a manufactured home on the west side of Sand Road in the area labeled ten, approximately two thousand two hundred fifty-nine feet south of Louisville Street. The use chart requires a special exception for dwelling manufactured or modular homes in an R in zoning district. The home site area is shown at one hundred feet wide of the road, with a total square footage of forty thousand three hundred forty-seven. Required minimum wire is forty thousand square feet. The required setbacks are thirty in the front, twenty-five in the rear, ten on the side. There are currently noted dwellings on the home site. The request was noticed in accordance with the UDC, thirty-six property owners are registered with one hundred sixty feet of the subject property notified directly by mail, a legal ad was published in Starville Daily News on May twenty-third, twenty twenty, and a sign posted on the property in a conspicuous, uh, location. As of this date, the planning officer received no response from the notification. Section three point four point one lists the eight criteria for special exception approval. Sections thirteen point three point four of the UDC requires that the special exception needs the additional standards. There are eleven additional standards for the proposed use. In the opinion of the planning department, proposed use associated with special exception request does need criteria for special exception approval.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Havelin. Uh, any discussion from the board members? Alderman Carter?
No.
Alderman Little?
No ma'am.
Alderman Walker?
No ma'am.
And Beatty? Vice Mayor Perkins?
No ma'am.
And Alderman Vaughn? Alright, none. I will open it to the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item now would be the opportunity. Be either speaking for or against. Is the applicant here? Okay, yes ma'am. Anything you wish to say, ma'am? Ms. Taylor, it's, it's, Ms. Taylor, right, yes. Ms. Taylor, anything?
Uh, I have a... Uh, let me tell you, the problem in my mind, in the back of my mind is for Williams, and then the, the student I was just wondering, do anything about having this suggestion, what do I need to do?
Uh, and that is, that is sixteen section property, so that is school property, right? I think, you know, probably need to contact the school about that. I'm, I'm not sure how that would, how that would work.
Because I got two miles to you.
Yes, ma'am.
I owe the mom, and I want to have a trip to buy that in Williams.
Yes, ma'am. I would suggest you contact the school about that, okay? Alright, yes ma'am, thank you. Alright, anyone else? Public hearing? Alright, seeing none, I will close it to the public hearing. Uh, I need a motion, if someone would make one. I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn, do I have a second?
Sorry.
Second from Alderman Beatty. Any further discussion? Hearing none, if you would, answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Vaughn. Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Sisdrum.
Yea.
Alderman Carter.
Yea.
Alright, it is unanimous, thank you so much, everyone, thank you, Mr. Havelin. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda, uh, which was much more controversial than I ever realized it would be, is the downtown street redesign, which, um, I had thought was a very cool way to, um, utilize spaces in our downtown, which was not particularly busy, uh, during COVID in particular, and hoping that it would be a place where we could have a sense of place in our downtown, um, to benefit the public in general, benefit, um, our businesses, benefit the, the public as a place to, to gather, um, kinda like a downtown park, and there are multiple cities that have done this across the country, um, and there are, you know, I just think opportunities to feel a little better about being in, in our downtown area, and that was what this was intended to do. So we have a, um, can you, can you pull up the e-packet, uh, map to show it on there? Mr., Mr. Kemp, you wanna come up and... Mr. Kemp, um, other half, better half, Ms. Leah Kemp is with Carl's Small Town Center, and she had suggested this as an, as an opportunity for us, and had put this together, and, um, so Mr. Kemp was going to be, um, she is not with us tonight, but he said he could potentially represent the, uh, concept, so that everyone could take a look at it and, and see. Um, and while he's doing that, Mr. Latimer has researched it, and researched the, um, legitimacy and the, um, legality of it, particularly with Mr. Brown, you know, as an attorney making his argument, so, Mr. Latimer, would you like to weigh in on this for us, please, sir?
I'd be happy to, ma'am, and I appreciate Mr. Brown's comments, and he and I have had a conversation by phone, and have exchanged a letter on this issue, and we don't necessarily disagree with what the law says, it's all about the facts. Mr. Brown would be right if the city was repurposing these nine places solely for the benefit of a particular business or a group of businesses, in other words, if it was only seating for restaurant island, and they were waiting on tables, and nobody else could sit there, and signing your debit card out there, that would be an improper repurpose, uh, repurposing a public space for private gain. But the way I understand this is proposed, is this is gonna be general public seating, so anybody could sit in these seats for any lawful public purpose. There's a couple of examples come to mind as Mr. Brown was giving his presentation, so i- it's not necessarily, was not, related to restaurants necessarily in that block. I mean, somebody could go across the street to the pita pit, grab a sandwich and come eat at one of those tables. Somebody could go to the courthouse and check out a file, and review that file at that table. Somebody could buy a book at the bookmark and come down and start to read that book at one of those tables. Somebody who could be in Mr. Brown's lobby, and maybe his needed a break to go outside while somebody else was being consulted in his office, and they could go outside and sit at that seating area. It, it would be a repurposing of public space for a different public use, and it's legal, legal so long as it's a life for life swap, public for public.
Yeah, thank you, sir. And again, it was intended to be temporary, I mean, it's tactical urbanism, and it was one of the things we were looking at doing several years ago in front of the library, with that right turn lane, we wanted to do that, it didn't quite come through, but the concept is just to do something on a temporary basis and to try it out, and so that's what this is, and that was why I was thinking about it, because I thought it was a really cool idea, and there are places that people are doing that, and while I understand Mr. Brown's comment about parking, also know that if you walk a block, there's parking back behind Starville Cafe, there's parking back behind Sullivan's, there's parking down Lafayette, and parking has not been one of our issues since we've all been struggling with COVID and, and stores being shut and lack of, uh, business activity downtown, so again, this is one of those opportunities for people to feel comfortable and a sense of place in our downtown area. So, um, anyway, that's, that's my feel, and I still think it's a cool thing to do, and I would like to see it, try it on a temporary basis. So Alderman Carter?
Uh, I want to maybe sort of, definitely sort of, uh, with Brown, and, I mean, in my opinion, this is subject of explore toward in nature, uh, and electric official, and you get seven or eight pages of signatures from basically a different yard in downtown market, or something going on like that. And, um, parking has always been an issue downtown, parking continues to be an issue downtown, I think it was just some of those, I think we started looking at metering, we started looking at other things, but our employees, we have a board member here, uh, to look apart, to list names of individuals who, uh, we know personally, who, we go down this list, and, um, not only business owners, but there are people that are, uh, can't fit circuits and fit short, and so, uh, the business is huge, and while you might say it's, um, you know, for select few are getting a look at playing the streetery for a reason, um, and I would agree more leaning toward, uh, fifth point town, uh, tight financial time, another one question I've asked with Ken or Mr. Kemp, is basically we talked, uh, three or four different design processes between Cinder Block, which is basic, really basic, really entry to something that is, doesn't look like Cinder Block, so the fun for this, well, I don't know whether it comes from, but who's gonna take the boss of that?
It was, it was a GoFundMe, and let me, let me counter, I'm not, we don't do count, point or count, but I did not proceed with this any further until I had talked to the Main Street Association, and the Main Street Association, uh, which consists of other merchants downtown, who are the actual merchants and not just the lawyers, uh, and people involved in government buil- buildings, people who were wanting people to actually come down and make it a place to be, uh, for retail purposes, um, I did not proceed until the Main Street Association had said they were in favor, so let me be really clear, um, about that. Uh, and as to the other, I'll take Edward off the hook here, because it was gonna be a GoFundMe, and I have a few sources of going to fund me, so, that was, it was, no city funds whatsoever were to be expended on it, o- other than, uh, planters, which we already own, and, um, uh, some benches, which are already downtown, so it was gonna be, uh, use, using products that we already have access to, and then other businesses downtown were going to pitch in to, um, include things like plantings in the planters, that was gonna be the Main Street Association was gonna do that, and, um, tables and chairs were gonna be donated, so it was, it was not to, to cost the city anything financially other than the use of things that we already have, so, I apologize for taking that up, but anyway, Alderman Carter, anything for us? None? Okay, alright, Alderman Sisdrum?
I'm, I'm supportive of this idea, I think that anything that gets more people downtown, more people visible downtown, um, benefits the local businesses downtown, and, um, generally, I think one of the things that we want to do, particularly right now when businesses are struggling, is to do whatever we can to help make, um, make... To, to, to benefit as much as we can, having people downtown, whether they're there for the restaurant or some other reason, um, to, to be there. Parking, parking is usually not a issue downtown unless you want to park in front of a particular door, and then it becomes an issue, um, but if you're willing to walk a block or so, there's rarely a time that you can't find a parking place. It may not be where we call it, probably the first to admit that, but it's, um, there's generally parking available. Um, and with, with that said, I'd like to, can I make my motion, you know?
Well, certainly, you can make a motion anytime you like.
Uh, I would like to move forward with creating a streetery by repurposing nine public parking places, um, located on the south side of Main Street, between lots thirteen through seven, on block three of the city of Starville nineteen fifty-one, Parker L. Goodman official map, to provide seating areas to be used by the public for any lawful purpose.
Okay, thank you, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Sure.
I have a second from Alderman Beatty. Alright, further discussion? Anything further, Mr. Alderman Sisdrum? Alright, Alderman Little?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, um, well, when I first heard the idea about the concept, I was kinda mixed on, on my feelings about it, and that was, um, uh, a couple of years ago, and as you said, you mentioned the, the library, um, but that ship has sailed, and we never went forward with it, um, a lot's changed in the last three or four months, um, downtown in our state and our nation with the, uh, current coronavirus situation. What I do like about this is that we don't have, we're not gonna be using any city funds whatsoever, uh, I think we're gonna lose eight, maybe nine parking spots on a temporary basis, which I also like, it's temporary, um, but right now, we are hemorrhaging businesses downtown. Uh, uh, I was at the Main Street, um, board meeting earlier by Zoom, and, uh, R. Tab announced today, they're losing, they're going to just be selling their footprint, I think she's gonna be going online and trunk shows, uh, it's a date, Dress and Tuxedo Shop, they're on the corner, uh, closed end of June, uh, Curio just recently announced they're closing, the Paporian's closed until August, Lipi Story is closed until August, I believe, and, uh, I believe there's some other stores that may be on the bubble as well. If we can keep these restaurants, uh, going downtown, which helps provide an after hour, you know, they don't, we don't roll up our carpets at five PM when they're, when the, the, um, business office is closed, it keeps the retail going and, uh, a little bit of nightlife down there, um, I've, I've been in, I've lived in towns where at five o'clock, when primarily all their offices are, uh, attorney offices, they're just, they're, they're just dead after five PM, um, and this is something we need to be mindful of, we're in, we're in extraordinary times, uh, and I, I believe we have not seen the ripple effects that's about to be going through the city of Starville's, uh, budget, and it's something, if, if we can keep something going, hopefully we'll have a football season, hopefully the series will come back and be able to stay, um, we don't know what the future holds for us, as we've seen over the last few months, and, uh, on a temporary basis, I'd be willing to support this and see how it goes. I yield.
Alright, thank you Alderman Little. Alderman Walker?
I agree with, uh, Alderman Little's comments, I think, as, looking at this as a temporary, on a, on a temporary basis to see how this is gonna work, and while this is a novel idea for, for Starville, uh, they, they do this in every municipality or, uh, all over the country, so this isn't a, a new concept that we're trying out, uh, for the first time to see how it goes, this is a, a tried and proven, uh, opportunity to increase, uh, spaces for people to be. Uh, when that car pulls up, that one parking space is probably gonna have more times than not a single person in it, using, uh, reallocating that same space to have a table that might could sit three or four people in it, um, is a, is a better use of, of that space, and so on a temporary basis, I'm absolutely in favor of supporting this idea, and then we can see how it goes and we can reevaluate.
Thank you Alderman Walker. Alderman Beatty?
Mayor, I completely agree with, echo Alderman Little's comments about the, doing this in this, uh, extraordinary time we're having in the downtown business, um, I was a law not many days ago, and, um, there's downtown, the best made over the years, and, uh, we have a good solid business base, downtown stars, we take it everywhere we can, and I've worked with these businesses, and often have an alternative for people going in, and it's a way to utilize the business, or, or to come to a common area, or, and, and utilize the, the food, um, is, I think, a good idea, and, and so, if we go, if, if times change and, and, and business comes back, and we start having parking problems and things like we have, you know, hard time parking place kind of stuff down the road, then we can reevaluate, we'll address that thing.
Thank you Alderman Beatty. Alderman, uh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Perkins?
No comments, ma'am, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alderman Vaughn?
I want to come in.
Yes, sir.
I'm in a lot of spaces, will we be giving up?
Nine.
Nine.
There are five hundred and twenty-five parking spaces downtown in the, in the two, two block area that we counted a number of years ago.
Five hundred and twenty.
Five hundred and twenty-five, as I recall, and that takes it to, from Jackson back toward this way, which includes, uh, on-street parking as well as the two, um, public parking space, spaces in the back, um, one behind Starville Cafe and the other one behind Sullivan's, if you recall, so, okay. Alright, any, any further discussion?
I just, I want one more thing.
Yes, sir. Alderman Carter?
It's just, I guess I just, ten years, I've heard that in that parking section, probably, you know, this doesn't have to ask the parking, in my opinion, um, probably half the people here voted, at least that red light, somewhere in one of these nine spots and further, and, uh, it's just, I guess it's just ironic, just when, I'm a train, and if that's most according to, and probably most non-critical spot there are, so, um, a lot of these, um, a lot of these features are not just lawyers, and they got people's financial plans, right in purple, so, uh, I think we need to be cognizant of that, and realize it's probably the most, and I thought the most critical. In my opinion, for the courthouse, if we're going to have any, now, let's do it on the other end down there, around the plaza of, uh, what is now, it's bank, something like that, but I wouldn't be voting against it, I guess, you know, the year to year we talked for every, every parking spot. We had something to discuss about, and now, all of a sudden, uh, you know, destroying it. And I know it's a novel idea, I know it's trending and things like that, and we're running it like a business, I would say it's not a great idea. Should be temporary, uh, you know, I want to have some time, what's the timeline on this particular thing? No, we're going to have a revote, that's something.
Well, we'll certainly revisit it, I, I mean, this is indeed temporary, there's no question about that. Um, so, you know, and as, as, gosh, as the pandemic hopefully goes away or we get a vaccine or whatever it is, or even a few months goes by and this isn't working, people aren't using it, then obviously you revisit it.
I just don't ever want to hear another discussion about downtown parking, how they manage to, how metering and, you know, because you're going to take the most, in my opinion, a lot of especially elderly and disabled people having to use that side of the courthouse. So, uh, the location couldn't be worse, in my opinion, if you want to have a streetery metering, we've always talked about, uh, you know, people officially paying, having something down that area, uh, just being taken from the government's end of Main Street, it's not there. The logic was, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Carter. Anyone, anything further? Okay, I have, uh, motion and I have a second and now, uh, if you would please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Bailey.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Nay.
All right, by a vote of five to two, motion carries. All right, thank you. Um, next we have what everyone is here for and I know y'all have been patient and waiting and, and we certainly appreciate that. Um, next is a discussion and consideration of adopting a resolution reinstating the requirement for the use of masks in businesses, helping the public, and when social distancing is unobtainable. Um, and we have a resolution that was in your packet and you were, you were issued a new one or, or emailed a new one today that's had a little bit of a language change in it. Um, so let's, let's start and see what kind of discussion, um, anything, uh, Mr. Latimer from our, from our, uh, resolution that you modified earlier today?
None, uh, since the email I sent out earlier to the board.
Okay, all right. Now, what I did in preparing for this is I asked the, uh, um, O C H, I asked Mr. Jackson to come visit with us and give us his status on the hospital. Uh, y'all have done a vastly, um, broad job of, of enhancing your website, um, in the last little bit. It's very, very robust dealing with COVID and I appreciate that because you can pull up numbers and recommendations and all kinds of things. So, if you would like to come, give us your, your thoughts on, um, the hospital and their ability to handle the, um, circumstances that we're currently dealing with and, and the status, that would be wonderful.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the invitation, comfortable, that's all, and, uh, and talk a little bit about the hospital, um. So, first of all, I want to let you know that I did bring a team with me because I wasn't sure just exactly how much detail you guys might want. So, I do want to say in a minute to acknowledge them and so with me is Mary Captain Pike, who is the Director of Public Relations and Marketing and she is the point person and authority for public communications. So, I want to make sure that we, that's clear. I also have with me tonight Savannah Brown, she's the Director of Quality and Infection Control. And being the Infection Control Director, she certainly is dealing with this issue on a daily basis as a hospital. Uh, Amy Loggins is the Director of Quality and, and, uh, Safety Officer, she too is involved on a daily basis, uh, from the hospital's perspective dealing with this pandemic and the effects of, uh, at the hospital. Um, she and Savannah both are responsible for the daily recording, this is the State Department of Health. And so, the information that the mayor just referred to is included on our website, comes from the information that they report to the state every day. Um, also with me is Wes Andrews, he's the Director of Respiratory Therapy, since, uh, COVID nineteen is respiratory disease. Um, he certainly has a, a, a unique respect and he's on the front line, uh, taking care of the community. And also, when, uh, our incident command system is activated, right now it's demo live, but when it is activated, he is the incident commander. So, I brought them and I made it first to them, uh, if it needs, uh, but I wanted to acknowledge that. First thing I want to do though, is take the opportunity to acknowledge the hospital staff. I think, um, we've gotten a lot of, uh, credit for what we've been able to do in this community, uh, dealing with this pandemic. And I certainly wanted to just take the minute to take the opportunity to thank our staff and our medical staff for what they've been able to do given the novel coronavirus. It is unknown, right? It continues to provide daily challenges and, uh, I certainly think that we've been up to the task. Uh, I wanted to share with you, and I have shared this with the mayor, but I want to share with, with, with the reins, um, that the hospital's capacity for positive patients, um, currently is at fourteen. Um, we have, it, it once had fifteen and we did reach one day where we had fourteen positive patients in the hospital. That's been one time and that's been our peak. As of this morning, we only had two positive patients in the hospital. So, I think you could say that we, we are far from being overwhelmed. Um, we certainly have been able to meet the needs of this community and, and what we've seen as far as those positive patients that require hospitalization. Obviously, not every positive COVID patient requires hospitalization. Um, let's see, so, you know, I, I have heard as well as you have about this, uh, fear of this surge in the fall. Certainly, I think that we, we certainly are prepared for that. Yes, there could be a point when, uh, if it, if enough people require hospitalization that the hospital would reach a point what we call a diversion. Meaning that we can take no more positive patients than, than say fourteen that we are ready to, to receive. But we do have communications and a system where those patients can be placed. We've worked with other hospitals in order to place these patients if we happen to be on the version. Now, we have not reached a point during this pandemic where we have been on the version. Now, we have been on the version for other reasons but not for positive COVID patients. In fact, we've actually received a COVID patient from another hospital that reaches one being on the version. So, I wanted to, to highlight that as well. I think so far, we have had sixty-seven, a total of sixty-seven patients admitted to the hospital with twenty deaths associated with COVID. Uh, I know there was a question earlier about worldwide numbers and I don't, I don't think that we had them at the time, but I believe Dr. Landham had those. And if you don't mind, Mayor, I would ask her if she would, if she'd open it.
Thank you, thank you. I'll say briefly, there's not a national, uh, you know, CDC necessarily that studies that. But John Topkins has been doing, um, a pretty good job of tracking numbers, um, worldwide. So, just to give you the information from that, um, there are roughly eleven point eight million cases worldwide. The U S is at the top of that list, two point nine million, Brazil falls next at one point six. Um, and further down after that, just to give you an idea, the U K, which I would say is probably our next, or a close, you know, similar country, maybe not in size, but, um, two hundred and eighty thousand cases. Um, so our percentage of that is about twenty-five percent of the world.
Our population is about five percent of the world's population, correct?
I believe so.
And, Dr.
Thanks, Appleton.
Uh, Mr. Jackson, I had pulled up on your website because I was looking at, um, how y'all had amended it briefly and, and my understanding is, um, in, in your, I don't know what the, I don't know what your dropdown menu it was, but it's, I think it's personal protection or something along those lines. And one of the things that it says among, among others, which is to wash your hands often and avoid close contact, which goes back to our six-foot distancing. The next one under that is cover your mouth with and nose with a face cloth when around others. And so, that is, that is on your website and that is your recommendation, is that correct?
That is correct.
Didn't mean to hijack you.
No, no, you're fine. I, I wanted, I'm sure as well that the average length of stay for a COVID patient is about fifteen days. And, uh, for the longest time, we were fluctuating between eight and twelve COVID patients per day. Again, with our peak being fifteen to fifteen, uh, that certainly has, we've seen a decline over the last couple of days. Uh, I admit this surge is small, you know, not necessarily a surge, may not necessarily result in hospitalization, but certainly it, it could as well. I, I, I don't know that we know what's going to happen when we see that surge. Um, the, the constraints that the hospital has to have is, is not with the facility. We certainly have the whole third floor available to open up, our capacity constraint has been, and I'm sure this is something Mayor has been to that. But we are not alone in seeing that as a challenge. I think all hospitals are seeing staffing as a major challenge within with, with this pandemic. Not only treating COVID patients, but trying to get back to some level of normalcy. I think our challenge going forward is finding the balance, right? Um, hopefully, we will not be included in, uh, what was shared earlier with the, um, with the State Department of Health, um, shutting down elective surgeries for those selected counties. And I'm sure there's a lot of reasons for doing that and, um, you know, P P E, um, for hospitals, it's been known, it's been, we've been on notice by State Department of Health that if you resume elective surgeries, then don't count on the state for protecting personnel equipment. Um, so we certainly keep an eye on that and we do have some challenges with it. Uh, but so far, we're holding our own and, um, we're doing the best we can there. Um, today, actually yesterday, there was a letter issued by the American Hospital Association, the American Medical Association and the American Nurses Association. And I don't know if you've seen that, but I brought a copy and I'll read that for you and I have simply marked on here where what they say is, uh, that they urge the American public to take simple steps, we all know what will help spread the virus. And you're exactly right, wearing a face mask, maintaining physical distancing and washing your hands. Now, this has been the, the consistent message of not only those organizations, but the Mississippi Hospital Association, the CDC and the Mississippi State Department of Health. So, what the hospital relies on for our position that we take is consistent with those thoughts, okay?
Um.
Mayor, let me stop him. I didn't hear about the position that he takes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was going to, the position that the hospital is taking?
Yeah, I wasn't clear on what he said. He said the position that his hospital takes or the position. I want to be sure I understand about the, have him repeat that quote about the position. Who is he referring to?
He's referring to the, uh, American Medical Association, the American Hospital Association and the American Nurses Association have issued a letter and it discusses that we will help stop the spread of the virus by wearing a face mask, maintaining physical distancing and washing hands. So, he is, am I accurate on that, Mr. Jackson?
That is correct.
That's the, that's the position the hospital is taking, uh, vis a vis that particular letter, right there.
That has been.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm sorry, Mayor.
That has been our consistent message. That is one of my social news. Um, yes, we did have to go back in and update our website right quick, but, but that, that has been our position. Um, let me go ahead and address the issue, um, with medical staff. We have certainly seen, as many of you have, all of the information on social media, the reliance on certain community experts as it's been described. Um, and we're all talking about, I think, there's no secret, we're talking about Dr. Husker. So, let me just mention this, Dr. Husker, uh, was an independent practicing physician at the beginning of this pandemic. Um, he has been on the front line treating these patients on a daily basis since it came about. Um, he developed a relationship, now, this is just my opinion, this is not the hospital's opinion, I just wanted to kind of set the stage and then we'll get back to the hospital. But he developed, in my opinion, a relationship with the media who, as I'm sure at the time was reaching out for what they seem to be big experts in this field. Um, and he was very grateful for providing them that, that feedback, that information, which, um, they use to, you know, prepare their articles and, and share information with, with the community. Dr. Husker did become an employee at the hospital on April first, so midway of this, this pandemic, well, calendar year, today. He became a hospital employee, but he continued to volunteer that information when he was contacted. Now, I must say, I, I think he has written a couple of letters to the editor, but for the most part, the media has contacted him and been seeking this information, okay? I want to make clear that he has not been doing this as the representative of O C H, okay? Uh, but I think he does deserve the credit for what he does for this community and, and taking that leadership role in treating patients, so.
You recommend.
Provide him the de-credit.
I recommend that we, that we put in place a face mask requirement in public spaces in the city of Starkville.
I, you know, I don't, I don't come before you being the authority, I think our recommendation is.
Speaking on behalf of the whole county hospital as its administrator, what is your recommendation to, uh?
Our recommendation is to wear face masks, wash hands and bring hand lotion.
Mayor, I want, this, we have a resolution before us.
We do. Um, I, I have one other person who's been kind enough to come tonight, so let me let her, um, speak so that we can at least acknowledge her, having spent all this time with us. Uh, Ms. Campanella with the, with, uh, the Emergency Operations Center had said she would come here and give us an update on what's going on as it relates to that and, Mr. Jackson, I don't mean to.
Mr. Jackson, thank you for the information.
Don't mean to cut you off either, but, you know, we appreciate you being here and, and obviously representing the hospital and your approach to this, so.
I prefer being always prepared.
Uh, well, and always prepared is, is even better, is even better. I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. If there are, we will get back to you shortly, how about that? We'll let Ms. Campanella come up and she can make a presentation and then we'll, we'll see if any questions remaining. Ms. Campanella, thank you so much for waiting, waiting through all of this.
So, I know I have a few numbers, um, I picked the Department of Health for us last night and they didn't kind of like the numbers, I think probably from the holiday weekend. But since March eleventh, and y'all may have this information anyway, I just want to go ahead and put it out there. Um, since March eleventh, total test statewide for COVID nineteen, which includes the antibody test, has been three hundred and twenty-seven thousand and eighty-seven. As of July the sixth, Mississippi has three hundred thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six confirmed positive cases and two hundred and forty-eight probable cases. That has been eleven hundred and thirty-nine and nineteen probable. And I'm curious about the probable, what that means. Um, so probable cases are those that test positive by other methods such as the antibody.
You can't know that, that's a thing to update today. Nine hundred and fifty-seven cases today during the state's total first, uh, feeling.
Okay, so that.
Actually, playing, playing Magic as well, I suppose, like.
It's forty-four deaths while you're editing.
A lot of, a lot of, yes, yes.
So, I believe about two dollars still at five fifty, or one now there at five fifty-two, that's what you have supplied today. Five fifty-six positive, twenty-seven deaths, a hundred and twenty-eight is from long-term care facilities and eighteen of those deaths are from long-term care facilities. As I know, the county municipal office made an order yesterday requiring, uh, masks by all the clientele and all county businesses and employees and to follow CDC recommendations on the face covering. So, as far as those recommendations include face coverings in public, social distancing, of course, the hand washing. And then face coverings are not required by children under the age of two or anyone who has any type of respiratory disease. Um, community mask, I want to talk a little bit, so we come, the community mask institution, I know that y'all know that, on June the thirteenth. Um, we received forty-three thousand masks being handed out to our residents. Um, we had given out about thirty-eight thousand we've so far. That day on June nineteenth, we gave out a little over nineteen thousand masks. I mean, a lot of people that have been looking at masks have been coming to get those masks. Um, as far as not only, now and one are caller squares, we are still doing that, so every caller we get, we ask those callers, uh, totally questions, you know, first and second, say. Um, and I just want to say that. And I just want to say, this has been a extremely stressful time for everyone. And I would like to give a heartfelt thank you to all of you, the city and the county officials, for your support through all of this. Because of the tons of decisions that y'all have to make, I feel like our community is stronger and more resilient to disasters than.
Thank you so much for, for being here. We appreciate it. Okay, and that's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go down the line for questions. All in the cover or comments? All in the cover, questions to comment?
Yes, Rick Vaughn, so I'm a new business manager like Mr. Mike here, who has passed. My question again, with any business like this lady here, that hard time city attorney, this resolution addressed people with adverse conditions and have told breathing rights.
Now, you would need to write that in if that's what you wanted specifically addressed. There's not a written exception for that in the county.
What does the city of Clark do regarding that?
I don't know what the resolution says, but the sign it says that it just doesn't apply. It's not enforced against someone with medical condition.
Uh, second, I'm gonna ask you the point of questions I've got to ask. I've been asked like a difference. First of all, whatever gets passed tonight, obviously, I will comply with. Everything that's said tonight, I think the general public knows we're all concerned about this, obviously, and well-being, protecting everybody. Everything that's said as far as social distance, from Paul and Dr. Duke, I believe, are almost completely ineffective. And hand washing is, especially if you come to talk masks. What I really understand in my training is if you're unable to receive or able to have physical separation. So anything that, you know, for the most part out here, I think if you're sitting in your, the farther you probably been to anybody, in most social distance you've been all week, I think would be, in my opinion, to say, you should have to wear a mask. So with this resolution, some of the questions I've been asked, like golf fields, we've got a lot of terms coming up, and there are decisions. Your parents have had children from outside town, they get ball fields. Will they have to wear a mask while they're watching a kids' playback?
Outside?
No.
They, they have social distance.
They would be covered by the governor's executive orders for permanent team play.
Again, these are point of questions I was about to address, and I didn't have the exact answer. They were saying sometimes it goes to the protective camp and becomes more of a congested area in the ball field. And so what they're doing is they're transitioning different teams in, and sometimes the protective camp, they get closed, which is a law, revenue law for the city, or they just, they end social distancing. Second, churches, will this affect any churches whatsoever in the city? The government here try to mandate something on churches?
Not this resolution. They're covered by the governor's orders.
Okay, what does that say?
This church by church decision that strongly encouraged the basic fee, social distance, and limited, limited occupation.
Okay. Restaurants, what did y'all, you know, people be coming in, wear masks at the table? And if that's one of your, your act, or they can take their mask off, and that's one of your-
That, that would be the plan. If you come into the restaurant, get seated, take your mask off, eat. You get up and go to the restroom, put your mask back on, come back to the table, take it back off, eat. And then as you leave, you use your mask.
Um, timeline suggested. This definitely, you know, everything that was when this started, the case count can go over 50,000 zero population. And also, everything in 24 months where you're already vaccinated, you process. So what, when is the timeline on this and when is this terminated?
It doesn't have a timeline. It is until, until we rescind it. So rather than us going back and forth and back and forth, MSU is in place, the county's in place. I don't anticipate, I think this is gonna be a, at least on a two-year basis, a new, a new normal for us, is, is keeping the mask in place until we see some sort of difference in our community or until the numbers start going down and, and we get a hold on this, so.
And then last, there was a second question. If we do decide to football, there's a day a lot of times with insufficient access. That'd be allowed without masks outdoors, as long as it's probably-
Outdoors, yeah.
Oh, and then last, personally, the thing that I would like to say is, you know, in my opinion, it's got masks, everything I've seen. Even a lot of people have the blue jeans, turn it over and say, in fact, it's been thrown by, and it does feel sort of personal. I understand both sides of that argument. And I would personally, probably, in the first world, I would have always leaned towards business and the capital market allows business on, because they know their store, they have a layout of the store. It's quite congested, uh, tight atmosphere, definitely have a mask on, but it's something where, uh, lots of times to refill, I'm just thinking a couple of things, where I'm probably moving places and retailing a lot more than I am, even on outside, uh, events. So I would probably rather lean toward that business. They're gonna have a tough time, businesses, you may think more ownership comes in. Not just this vaccine mandate, but I've often had a lot of people that say, hey, I'm driving to other towns to buy my groceries. And I'm, I think they have some of that, but I also think, um, I'll always linger with the statewide mandate, whatever the governor says and the top health official. It enjoys, uh, reading this, which has come from 19 or 20 local doctors all time. Their opinion is what they said is it'd be a fluid motion and a fluid motion. So, uh, but just not enough data locally suggests this is a necessary mandate. But as in town, I think this, uh, these health professionals, um, could change opinions in a matter of weeks to think that I think about family and, uh, I've been saying this, can't tell, has done excellent job, uh, seeing what her office has helped you from not on the EOC standpoint, but just a community standpoint. And getting that mask appreciated than you've done, and what you handled, also, Mr. Jackson, the hospital staff, and all of the doctors on that say, my opinion is, uh, nothing back then, come sooner. You know, we still have a year out, hope them long, hope it's a week. But they're more to come. It's hitting, it's hitting real and, and, uh, you know, another individual who hasn't been on, picked up a mask, uh, obviously got to our area, um, something like this can look around the world, and Wuhan, and all, you know, you wonder if family 22 days later, that just sealed the bloods on my eyes to how fast this world is actually be, uh, interconnected between states and that. Thank you. All of you.
All right, thank you, all in the cover. Alden Siskel.
I'm gonna take mine, but I would like to say that I, I suspect that we can have, um, well-intentioned differences of opinion. Um, I do think that one of the reasons we do have differences of opinion right now is we don't know what we don't know just yet. We're, each day we learn something new and different about this. And, and that, that lack of certainty is also being reinforced by our local experience, not mirroring what we're seeing in other parts of the country just yet, or even what we're seeing in other parts of Mississippi yet, just yet. But while we've had very positive experience thus far, um, on our early, early cases, did seem to be in long-term care facilities or residential facilities. These days, when you're exchanging the numbers from one day to the next, we're going to say that those are community transmissions and not transmissions in long-term care facilities or residential facilities. So it is changing. But I'm, I'm grateful that we have physicians who are willing to be engaged in the public dialogue. And, um, I appreciate them all stepping forward, whatever their opinion was about this. I do think that as we look at, um, experts across the country, across the state, we will find that the preponderance of that, um, recommendation that we're gonna get are that masks will help. They're not, um, absolutely 100% effective, but that will help. That coupled with, um, distancing and, um, washing your hands will all help. And, and what we're trying to do is just not go too far down this rabbit hole here in our community. We're trying to keep our community healthy and safe, and our business community healthy and safe. So we don't want to find ourselves in a position where we have waited too long and the numbers have spiked, and we find ourselves in a position of maybe having to close a business as opposed to, um, taking these precautions right now. I think that the consistency between the city and the county and the university are critical in keeping, keeping as many of us safe as we possibly can. Um, I obviously am supportive of this, and I've not heard anything to my, changes to my mind about that. And do we have a motion yet? If I think I might have like to make them.
No, Alderman Brady was going to make one and I stopped him, so let's, let me travel down the road here and, and we'll do it. So no, ma'am, um, not yet, we do not. Are you, Alderman Little?
No, ma'am, thank you.
All right, Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Bates?
Just, just, just one comment. State Department of Health, they've talked Thomas Dobbs, who repeatedly urged Mississippians to wear masks as coronavirus numbers continue to climb. Dobbs has said the recent surge is just the beginning if residents don't wear masks and practice social distancing. Quote, "We will not care for Mississippians." He stressed that Mississippians, this is our state health officer. He stressed that Mississippians, particularly younger residents aged, ages 18 to 29, need to follow Dr. Tate Reeves' executive order to maintain social distancing requirements. Dobbs said positive cases of the virus have surged in, in recent weeks in that demographic, up to five times what it had previously, had previously been recorded. Most will recover from this virus, but run the risk of exposing other older age groups who are more vulnerable. Um, Mississippi, just to remind, folks, Mississippi recorded its first confirmed case of coronavirus on March the 11th. Today, we have 32,214 cases, if we're not, if we're not on, on to the importance of, of, and the dangers of this, of this virus. Another thing I'd like to remind us of, remember, Rand sent out, to all Mississippi State employees on June 29th, said, "Bacon," this was from the general counsel at Mississippi State University, "baking current rise in COVID-19 cases throughout October Hall County. Go triangle face coverage will now be required inside all campus buildings beginning June 30, 2020." Anything else? No. Mr. Wales, who came, I think he's not here now, but came early tonight, was talking about worldwide stuff, but one of the things, I should, it's stark, it, it sticks out to me, is Hong Kong and the fact that this stuff broke out, they got up, people started wearing masks, and they started putting in their practices early. Uh, that city was 7 million, 7 and a half million people, another 5 million in their kind of metropolitan area. As a result of face masks, Hong Kong has had only 1,200 cases of COVID, with seven deaths in the past six months. And, um, for that size population, that's pretty incredible. We face a situation where, if, and, and it may change because it's a cruel situation, that's term huge right now. But if, if 20,000 students show back, come back in in August, and we don't have something in place to, um, some, some, put some regulations, um, this thing could get away from us. And that's what I'm concerned with, and that's the people I've heard from, and a lot of them are concerned about. And granted, young, young, healthy people are gonna have mild cases of this stuff. And if they go out throughout the community and, and interact with people, older people particularly, people with compromised health or immune systems that have to get out and go to grocery stores, have to be able to go to the pharmacy somewhere, don't want to be there, have to be there. We're gonna run the risk of infecting people that, that are gonna have bad cases of stuff. And we're gonna see some people that we know die, so, uh, I, I think it's important. And I wanted to ask our, to the council, is, is our resolution or our thing, does it mirror, is it close to what the county passed yesterday?
You know, the county passed something on the fly yesterday. I've not seen that writing, so I can't say. I'll say what this does is it tracks the Mississippi Department of Health organization. It tracks substantially our, our previous resolution, our previous mask resolution, and it conforms with the governor's executive orders.
Because we are incorporated municipality, the county's thing is not covered with us unless we adopt, they are, I don't, unless we adopt our own law.
That's correct. Well, they also specifically excluded us. I don't know that they excluded Sturgis or Megan, so I'm not sure about that, but, uh, they specifically excluded us.
The only thing, other thing I would mention is that, that, uh, in, in the letter sent by the doctors, one thing that kind of stirred me was, I think, was the statement in the last paragraph. It said, "We believe herd immunity is real and valuable" to populations at large. Um, "We believe that healthy, that the healthy are able to take the brunt of what is exposed." A certain amount of disease burden to the greater group of population. Until we have a vaccine, that we can vaccinate, well, I don't know the doctors in here would know, probably 70% of the population in the United States, 60, 70% is what's considered to be herd immunity. I mean, there's, uh, or at least what I take from that is, unless we have a vaccine, a mask to the vaccine, and mass numbers, people are gonna have to get this stuff, get sick to get over, uh, in order for us to have herd immunity. And the thing is, if, if that happens, we're gonna have a lot of people who are gonna get this disease, that are gonna get bad cases of it, can die from it, it's just on itself. And so I, my motion is, if we adopt this proposed, uh, resolution and, and, and prove it to them.
All right, so the resolution that was at your table and was emailed to the board this afternoon?
Correct.
Okay, all right. I have a motion, um, do I have a second? I have a second from Alderman Siskel. Okay, we'll go, we'll continue down the line. Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor, for the recognition. Mr. Jackson, I, I want to ask you a few questions, perhaps at least one. Can you hear me?
He's gonna come up to the, to the microphone again, Vice Mayor.
Can you hear me, Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your presence tonight. And as I understand, you are the chief executive officer for the OCH Regional Medical Center?
That is correct.
And how long have you been serving in that position?
I have been in charge of at OCH Regional Medical Center since June 24th of 2018.
And, and you are here before this honorable mayor and board tonight as the official and authorized spokesperson on this matter, uh, for the OCH Regional Medical Center, am I correct?
That's correct.
And, and, uh, Mr. Jackson, you, you, you've heard the testimony, uh, many times of Dr. Thomas Dobbs. You know that he's our state health officer, and you've heard the testimony of the nation's infectious disease expert, uh, uh, Dr. Fauci. You, you familiar with their opinions, right?
Yes.
And, and you understand and, and acknowledge and attest to the fact that both of those well-recognized experts throughout this country and this state state that wearing a mask effectively curbed the spread of the coronavirus? And, and you don't have any reason to disagree with that, right?
You're correct, but we do not disagree with that. It is, it is their recommendation and we support that.
Very good. And, and you've read this resolution that the mayor has alluded to and that is, that is before the board right now, a motion, a second. You read that resolution or the resolution we're considering in the entirety, right, Mr. Jackson?
No, sir. I have not read the resolution in this environment. I only see what is-
Well, well, let me refer to the gist of it. You, you understand that the numbers that we received today from the Department of Health, the state of Mississippi, has indicated that there are 552 presumptive and confirmed, uh, cases of coronavirus in October Hall County. You're aware of that, correct?
Correct.
And you understand that, that there are 27 deaths in October Hall County, including one that was reported today, correct?
Correct.
And so, um, and, and given the fact that you've testified, uh, Mr. Jackson, as the, as the authorized spokesperson for the OCH Regional Medical Center, that there are challenges daily with this virus? And so, um, so you are of the opinion that wearing face mask slash face coverings will, um, um, help spread the curve of the coronavirus? And you are requesting for this mayor and board to enact this tonight effective immediately, am I correct?
I agree with everything that you said. I, I do not come before this board with the authority to, to demand it. I, I think that if you're asking me, my answer would be that we do support it and con, and consistent with the position of those bodies that I referred to earlier. I'm not sure that I have the authority to make that request. I'm simply, uh, sharing the view that we do recommend not only wearing a face mask, but washing hands and social distancing, just in being consistent with the bodies that I, that I referred to earlier.
I got you. Okay, so in other words, I, I understand you correctly now. So you, you are telling me you are fully recommending, uh, the requirement for facial masks and, and social distancing? I did get that correctly, right?
I would go as far as say, yes, we recommend that and support it.
Mayor, I yield the floor. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Alderman Vaughn?
Thank you. Good morning, guys. Thank you. Uh, uh, Dr. Hutzler, Dr. Hutzler, thank you so much. Thank you so much, ma'am, thank you. Uh, uh, Dr. Huston, Dr. Huston, thank you so much. My doctor, Brandon, and all of the other physicians, thank you all so much for coming. But ma'am, you know, I called you on a number basis, but my constitution continues on, uh, not wearing face masks. Not only that, you know, just, I think if, if all the bodies got the wear, both county, they approve, they're national approve, and all these other groups, people approve, how can we do an election side? I was thinking about, yeah, twenty-five years, call from someone, I got the virus and I give it to them, and that person dies. And I leave. I said I leave, my sister knew and I was taking this person's life on their family. Because I didn't have a mask on, but I took somebody's life, somebody's life, I cannot give a life, ma'am. Cannot do that, she can't, we can't give a life. So I'm not gonna create your life, I can't give a life. But if I can put a mask on and trade somebody's life, well, I would not want to trade somebody's life. If I go into the store, all them folks got a mask on. I go to the doctor, all them got a mask on. Wherever I go, in the business, they got a mask on. Why do you want to go in and condemn these people? Because I don't want a mask. I don't think it's right, I don't think it's fair, and I know a lot of people are gonna be upset because we approved this, if we approve it tonight. But I can't do that, because I have a sister that had, had the COVID. For a week and a half, and she said she would not, never wish this on no woman. I don't want it. I tell my kids, daddy don't want it. So ma'am, with all that said, I have to support you, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Um, we have a motion, we have a second, uh, no further discussion. If you would, please answer yea or nay as the deputy clerk calls your name. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Bailey.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman-
Yea.
Alderman Sistrup.
Yea.
Alderman Carter.
Nay.
By a vote of six to one, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We greatly appreciate y'all being in attendance. I know that you waited long for this, um, to, to speak and to be a part of this, and we do very much appreciate all that you do, um, for us in, in the community, so. Um, all right, our next, and last item, let me agenda, is acquaintance socket. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
A motion from Alderman Carter, go to second. Second from Alderman Sistrup. Uh, discussion, anyone, anyone hearing none? All, all those in favor, oh, I'm sorry. If you would, answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Bailey.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrup.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrup.
Yea.
Alderman Carter.
Nay.
All right, by vote of five to two, motion carries. And if you would, please, we have nothing for the executive session. I'm gonna read language for the work session. Uh, in accordance with the notice of fire under Mississippi County twenty-five forty-one thirteen, the board will be held in work session on the seventeenth of July at ten a.m. Meeting will be held at City Hall, second floor conference room located at one-ten West Main. Public committee are invited to attend. Notes should be provided to this work session within one hour of meeting the public conference notice at City Hall. It should be made a part of the minutes of the board meeting, work session will be open. Public meeting of the city is startled and the public press are invited to attend. Could I get a motion to adjourn, oh, I'm sorry, to recess? I have a motion to recess. And a second from Alderman Bailey. Discussion, if you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Nay.
Yea. Yea.
Alderman Bailey.
Yea.
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 All right, uh, unanimous, we are in recess. Thank you, everyone, for being here. And my understanding is it became a flood while we were in here. So, uh, it rained big time, like, so, thank you very much, you too.